All meetings are ordered at 7:04 PM. Good evening, everyone. This is the regular session meeting of the governing body for Bloomingdale, Tuesday, January 27, 2013. I ask everyone if you would please rise to see whether our nation's flag... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republicans who stand in this land, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal. Go call, please.
Here, Johnny.
Here.
Tom, Tom.
Here.
Short. Here, Con.
Here.
Del.
Here.
Sondemire.
Here.
Johnny.
Here. Also with us is our municipal clerk, Jim Carkey, and our attorney, Fred Semer. This is the official meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale on January 2, 2013, the public notification of the date and time. And place of this official meeting was passed. All local news media posted in the municipal building. As per state fire code, I have to acknowledge there are two emergency exits in these chambers, the doors which you walk through and exit to my left. If an emergency was to arise, please rise, walk early out of the building. If anyone has questions on that fire code, please raise your hand at this time. Number five, there's no need for an early executive session. We do have a few non-agenda items that will be added to the agenda. So I want to make mention of those now, in case any public wishes to speak to those. The first item is a waiver of a building zoning permit for 58 South Road, which is to install a accessible ramp for a handicapped child. That's the first non-agenda item we'll be adding. Second non-agenda item will be an inter-local agreement with the Livingston Board of Education. This is a matter of plan review, which is something we do through our building office for various school districts. We will also be discussing and appointing Sandy Caparada back to the secretary for Police Chief. Sandy had retired from a full-time position. February 1 will be coming back as part-time position as secretary that she had served previously. Another item will be on our February 5 council meeting, we will be having a public hearing on our open space application to the county. And this year, we will be seeking $175,000 for the DeLeasure Field Concrete Grandstand Restoration Project. We will also be approving a junior firefighter, Carrie Navverano, Bloomingdale resident. We also need to do a resolution authorizing service charges for returnable negotiable instruments, meaning we have to have an annual resolution of a $20 service fee on any return or bounced checks that may come into the borough. We are also going to introduce by title an ordinance amending our towing provisions for our tow companies utilized by the borough. This came in from the chief of police today, who said we could hold it. I'd rather introduce by title this particular ordinance. So again, it's quite a bit. If anyone from the public has specific questions or wants me to repeat that, please come up and I'll address those items. Those are the non-agenda items we will be acting on. At this time, I need a motion to open to early public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item, please come on up, state your name and address for the record. Colin, how are you?
Oh, good. How are you? Charlotte Dwyer, Pampi Lake. I'd like to address the agenda item, which is the ordinance that changes the powers of the borough attorney and best a great deal of them from the mayor. A lot of you probably don't recall many years ago how hard so many of us fought to vote for our own administrators' ordinance in this town. There were a lot of people who didn't think that we needed a professional to run the day-to-day business of this town. And it took many of us a number of years and a number of elections to get the majority on this council to pass that ordinance. It was important to us, and I think it's been a very good thing for the borough of Bloomingdale over the years. We've had some excellent borough administrators early on and some later on. Now I see that we are looking at vesting the powers of our administrator in the mayor, specifically John. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think it violates the intent of the ordinance. I think it blurs the lines between what's legislative in this town and what is administrative. There's very good reason why the ordinance states that the borough administrator should not be politically involved. That was not put in that ordinance without thought. And I think that while I suspect that, John, you would make fine for administrator, I think that you should decide which of the two jobs you want to do, one or the other. Now, I read the arguments about how we'll save money for the town and how John is committed, and John will not leave. He will stay. And all of these things may be very true. And I do believe he's committed. However, I don't think that's enough to virtually alter the form of our government. You're messing with the actual form of our government, and I'm not so sure that this is the best way to do it. Saving money, that may be the case, although quite frankly, I would ask each and every one of you to look back in history and say to yourself, when is the last time you interviewed a borough administrator in this town? And do you know what the market would bear for $85,000 or $90,000 a year? Have you really gone out there and looked? And I suspect the answer is no. You haven't done it in many years. Probably two mayors ago. You haven't looked for once since then. So you really don't know what's out there. But even, let's assume that the best thing that is out there is John. And that's what we want, all of us, how agree that's what we want. I still think that while we love to have our cake and eat it too, that it is not worth the effort to blur the lines between legislative and administrative and our government. It's not worth manipulating our form of government in Bloomingdale. And I feel very strongly about that. I think that what you're doing, quite frankly, I can't see it any other way other than a political move. You have created an ordinance that is drafted strictly to accommodate the wishes of one individual. Or to accommodate one individual, but not even the wishes, to accommodate one individual. I'm going to ask that you rethink this, and even from a practical point of view. From a political, practical point of view, has it occurred to you that the first thing that you're doing as a majority on the council is to give one of your own an $84,000 a year job? I suggest to you, this would not be lost on the residents of Bloomingdale. John, my suggestion to you is you make a choice. If you really feel that this is your location going forward, resign the position of mayor, and this council can hire you, whatever compensation they deem appropriate, and we'll look forward to a very successful tenure. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your comments. We talked about going in this direction recently with John. When Ted had already left, John stepped up and stepped in the role to run the borough. And he hasn't compensated one dime for that since Ted has left. We sat and we talked, a few of us, on the direction our town was going in beforehand and the direction of town we want the town to go in going forward. I looked at it as, back in 2003, we hired, since 2003, we hired four borough administrators. Every borough administrator we hire seems to come and go, come and go. Ted, our last administrator, has been here for longer than six years. In my eyes, when somebody as dedicated as John to making the borough move forward was our best choice as... I'll call it the administrator for now, but that's not the title. We're adjusting the mayor's salary to make John run the borough. Most of us feel, in our last conversation with our executive session... I'm not going to call people, but we were unanimously in support of doing this. The financial side is a big part of it. We're going to appoint a part-time CFO tonight, which is a huge savings. By putting John in this position is another huge savings. You're talking $150,000, without the benefits you put it all together, it's probably $150,000 savings going 2013. And I think that's a big part of it. I understand the concerns about the political side of it. And the conversations I've had with people up here is, I didn't run up here because I'm a Democrat. I didn't run up here because I'm a Republican. I ran up here, we had to come here because I live in this town and I want to see this town be successful. The point lines for me when I make my decisions, it doesn't matter to me personally. So that part of it I took out of it. And I've quoted, and I'll quote it here. If John is not doing the job, if John's job's not being done correctly, I will have no problem walking into his office and saying, "John, we need to go in a different direction. You no longer should be running the town." I don't have a problem with that. I see a big future with John running the town. I've seen things since November. Since he's taken over, we're going in the right direction. I see things getting done that weren't getting done before. I look at it as if we go out and we hire an administrator for $84,000 that's going to come in. That person is not going to stay here. And the past has proven it. They come, they go, they get better offers, they go somewhere else. Is that part of the job? I guess it is. When Ted was getting his salary brought up to wherever it was, his salary was taken away. Did it cause problems? I believe it did. I believe he didn't do his job well after that happened. Do it matter in difference? It's the past. The past is the past. I see somebody that walks around town here, that lives in this town, that cares about where this town is going to go. I think it's advantageous to have John run the town because any one of you can walk in the street and be sitting there and start asking him questions. Every minister we have doesn't live here. They do their eight hours and they go home. They come in and do their eight hours and they go home. John's here 24/7. He's always available for people to talk to, whether it be at a football game or a public event. We're just out to dinner with his wife in a local restaurant. He's never refused anybody. I think everybody in this room, whether you like John or not, knows he's passionate about what he does, and he will move this town forward. I've seen it already, already, in the eight weeks he's been running the town. I see it positive.
Mr. Johnson, I appreciate hearing everything you're saying. And I'm not standing here to have a discussion about Mayor John Dunleavy. I've known John for a long time. He used to be his neighbor in Morris Lakes. I'm not here to have that discussion. Discussion, take John Dunleavy out of the equation and tell me that you would even consider doing something like this. You are dealing with the structure of the government of this town. Take John out of it. And your issue about saving money, that's fine. Let John resign and take the job for the salary that you're talking about. The money will still be saved. I hear your comments, and they're all personal. I'm not talking about the personal. I'm talking about the structure of what it is you're doing. And I don't think it is the right thing to do. It's unwarranted. It's unnecessary. And if John feels that he, if he wants to be a business borough administrator, whatever you call it, going forward, that's fine. But make a choice, rather than change the structure of the government for one individual. This is not a personal issue with John Dunleavy. And I would ask each of you to take him out of the equation and say to yourself, why would I do this if it weren't for the fact that John Dunleavy has agreed to and would make a good borough administrator? Now, to your argument that he will stay, first of all, that has never been a criteria as far as I've known. Every corporation, every professional organization I've worked for, that's not part of the criteria for receiving a job. Number two, the reason that the ordinance states that no residency is required is because it expands the universe of potential applicants. We may have the very best applicants in Bloomingdale, but see, those two things, while they apply nicely to John, they really do not apply universally to the way the ordinance is written and the way the ordinance is supposed to benefit the borough. So I hear your arguments. I accept them. But what I'm saying to you is take John Dunleavy out of the equation and look at what you're doing. And I think that you will find that you would not do this under any other circumstances. You probably wouldn't even think about it. What would bring this to your mind if it weren't for the fact that John wanted to do this? Thank you.
Actually, I have a question for her, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Which is, taking John out of the equation, I was wondering how you anticipate, what it is you're expecting the government to change into? You say it's going to change, but I'm thinking, what I think it's going to change into may not be what you think it's going to change into. So I'd like some clarification there.
Well, you look at the ordinance. The ordinance states that the business borough administrator, whatever you call it, the ordinance is, well, pulls a borough administrator, the VA. That ordinance states that that individual should not be politically active. Now, why do you suppose it stays there? Because if you are politically active and you hold the sway and power of a politician, of someone who is elected, they hold sway and power, that power could be influenced where it should not be influenced. Now, that VA is also answers to all of you, all of you on the stakes, including the mayor. And quite frankly, given the circumstances as they are, obviously, as we all know, John has been the one that's been down here on a day-to-day basis, handling, administrating, and supervising the administrative end of it. So don't you see the conflict? There is an inherent conflict in there. And it's, I'm not saying he would abuse it. I'm not saying anything like that. But there is an inherent conflict. There is a reason these ordinances were written the way they were. And you are manipulating them. And you are manipulating them to benefit one individual. And I know you see it, believe me. I know you're sincere when you say you see it as the best for the town. But this is why I ask you to take the individual out of the equation and still see it as the best for the town. And I think that you will see it as not. These things were put in place for a reason, an absolute reason. That's my concern.
So you're saying what's best for the town is towards to go higher somewhat of his dedication, his experience, that's what it is. Running council for six years. He's ran his own company. He's led other organizations and led communities to much better places. His past history, two years as a mayor, six years as a councilor.
I think you make a wonderful girl.
Yeah, somebody like that for $85,000, which I'm going to tell you right now, there is no such person out there.
Well, then you don't know that because you have not looked. You have not advertised the position. You have not interviewed. So you can say that, but you do not know that.
I know that our surrounding towns, our business administrators are doing a pretty good job. They're making double that, if not more.
That may be, but...
Okay. So you're saying what's best for the town is to potentially spend that kind of money, right? Tax every single one of us, when every single one of us up here ran because we're sick and tired of our taxes going up, and we find a way to...
Mr. Johnson, don't talk to me about taxes. Be clear. I'm the one for Pampi Lake that came down here complaining about my taxes not too long ago. I'm paying more taxes than most of you that you may dream of. So don't talk to me about taxes.
Well, you're okay.
When you pay $20,000 a year on a 2,000-square-foot range, don't talk to me about taxes. John will make a good administrator. I know that you believe that.
Take John out of it. You're saying that you're willing to spend the kind of money that our surrounding towns are spending, even though your taxes are high, even though you're just right there with us, sick and tired of it. You're saying that look beyond the fact that it's the best financial decision for the town and look at it from a political side. It's not a good thing.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying to you, take John Dunleavy out of the equation and do everything you want to do. And hire John Dunleavy if that's what you want to do. But he should resign as mayor. Don't blur the lines. If he wants to be the borough administrator, I'm right there with you. Fine. You think this is the right thing to do, you do it. I believe everything you're saying. I believe you're sincere. I believe that this is, you believe this is the right thing, and maybe it is. But I don't believe he should have both positions.
You continue to talk about two positions. We are not hiring a business administrator.
Well, I wrote down your name.
We are creating a full-time mayor position. And for someone that's going to sit up there for eight hours a day and he's agreed to it, dollar him out? That's going to save us a couple bucks?
Mr. Johnson, nothing can convince me any differently.
Well, I kind of agree with that.
My suggestion is that John should resign. Apply for the position. Don't blur the lines. That's my opinion. And I appreciate yours. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Please go ahead. Thank you. Anyone else wish to make an agenda? Any address for the record, please?
I'm not the 86th man, Dan Avon. I just want to read what I have to say here because I think, I don't want to miss anything here that I have. The borough of Bloomingdale was incorporated as an independent borough on February 23, 1918, through the Borough Act of 1878. This act allowed any township with a land area of no more than four square miles and a population of 5,000 to establish itself as an independent borough through petition and referendum process, which is what we did. As an act in a borough, we governed by elected mayor and six council members. The mayor would preside a council meeting, but had no vote except to break ties. The Borough Act of 1987 allowed the delegation of executive responsibility to an appointed administrator. The voters elected the mayor and the six-member council to act as that large in a partisan election. The borough system has a weak mayor and the council performs the most legislative and executive functions. In the weak mayor form of government, the governing body, the council, you, the council here, you're responsible for policymaking and also the day-to-day administration, including hiring and firing ten employees. The mayor is not a chief executive in a true sense. His powers are limited to preside over meetings, his appointments, being able to break vote, to vote for ties and history. The legal powers of the council prevent the mayor from effectively supervising our administration. The mayor and the council's powers and duties are addressed in the Borough Code, Sections 2324, which comes straight from the statute. The proposed ordinance, 5.213, is amending the powers and duties that the statute does not permit under the borough form of government. State statute, Section 48, Home, 637, specifically states that borough councils made by ordinance delegate a pool or a portion of executive responsibilities of the municipality to an administrator, an administrator who shall be up for it pursuant to 48A936. It also states that the borough councils made by ordinance adopted an administrative code. The administrative code shall state the mandate of a creation of the borough's charter and the general law supplement of the charter. The administrative code shall set forth the mandate and the council shall perform its duties. However, the administrative code shall not, shall not, grant any power or authority nor authorize any procedure unless such power, authority, or procedure is unauthorized implicitly by the wording of the statute or derived by reasonable implication herefrom. Granting the mayor the power and authority to perform the borough administrator's duties is not included in the statute, and as such, the council cannot grant this power and authority to the mayor. Ms. Semer, I'd like to ask you, how do you advise the council that this ordinance is legal and that it would withstand a legal challenge?
Yes, I did. I drafted the ordinance. And I drafted the ordinance based on this form of government. And it's correct that historically, in this form of government, we look back at the origins of an administrator as to be an extension of the council, of the governing body. And you're right, it's a weak mayor form of government. So what we're doing here is basically saying the governing body has the right to delegate its executive authority to the extent in which they choose. If the ordinance is adopted, it gives the council the right to delegate some of that executive authority to the position of the mayor. Gives them the right to also take it away at any time. It's not making this individual the administrator. What it's doing is it's saying a lot of things distinctly differ than an administrator to maintain the checks and balances that already exist in this form of government. Number one, the appointment of the administrator, which is normally made by the mayor, advising consent of the council, is going to be made, in this case, when it comes to the mayor's responsibilities and full-time status, is solely at the discretion of the council. The term of this full-time position is that of a one-year term, and it can be terminated by the council. That's not the case when there's an administrator. If you recall, the last administrator had a multi-year contract. Further, the performance and responsibilities would be solely that to the council. That position, any of the administrative or executive-type functions that are undertaken by the mayor's position would be at the discretion of the council. Now, in a weak mayor's position, if we look at that position, that's not the case. So the governing body has the right to give this or delegate this authority, and it also has the right at any time to take it away. It doesn't outlast the governing body. It's not a multi-year type of appointment. And anywhere there's a conflict, although at this point in time, I can't see any conflict in the ordinance because anywhere there is a conflict, it would have to be handled by someone who would be the administrator. It can't be a full-time administrator under the ordinance. This only works, this only can be enacted if the administrator's position is not a full-time position. So there's a number of distinguishing features. But overall, the delegation of the council's authority is to whoever they choose. Remember, there's no license for an administrator. There's no designation for an administrator. There's no educational requirements by state. The state does not impose that on any type of administrator. So the governing body can delegate that authority or those responsibilities, is the better word, to anyone it chooses. And in this particular case, if it wants to delegate some of that to someone already familiar with various aspects of the government, it can do so, but it also could take it away. It's not as if there's an appointment of the mayor as an administrator. If that happened, it would be a term that coincides with the mayor. If there were ever any conflicts, then they wouldn't be resolved. So there's distinguished features to this. And it gives the mayor the ability, if the governing body chooses, not the mayor, if the mayor, gives the mayor the ability to work full-time in the office. So we've tried to maintain the checks and balances. I think we've achieved that. And we've also tried to not take away any of the authority of the council. As a matter of fact, in some ways, one could argue, it gives the council more authority to say to the office of the mayor, "We don't want you to work full-time anymore. We're going to take that away." So I guess I did bring that up.
Okay, well, I contacted the Department of City Affairs to obtain unbiased opinion of the ordinance that failed to the law. To obtain their opinion as to whether it is in conflict with our Borough Code and the state statute. And the DCA suggested that I contact the Public Integrity Unit of the County Prosecutor's Office. And I did so. I provided them with the ordinance, the resolution, the Borough Code, section addressed to the ordinance, as well as the Borough Code, section addressing the mayor and the council's responsibilities. The prosecutor's office informed me that this ordinance would fail upon a legal challenge on two counts.
Could you just tell me who in the prosecutor's office advised you?
McCade, Pat McCade. He said he knows you.
Yes.
He was surprised you hadn't called him. But anyway.
Surprised I called him for what reason?
He said, you know, you didn't that. But since I was calling about this, I was surprised.
I didn't get a call from you or Pat McCade, so...
Why wouldn't I call you?
Oh, okay. I thought you meant like, surprised I didn't call him back.
He said the first is the common law doctrine. Given the borough administrator's responsibilities to the mayor, it fails to the incompatibility doctrine. The mayor cannot be supportive to himself. In other words, he cannot supervise himself. Secondly, it's going to fail. It was tempting to take...
But wait for a moment. The mayor cannot supervise himself, The mayor cannot supervise himself, but I just went over with you that the mayor served solely in that position, in the expanded position, at the discretion of the governing body.
But if you read our ordinances and the state statute, the borough administrator reports to the mayor and council.
But this isn't the borough administrator.
He has given him, according to the ordinance that you're providing...
There's administrative responsibilities, but none which would in any way conflict with his position. But again, you indicated that it could be a conflict with the governing body. The governing body...
It's the prosecutor's office informing me that that was the case. I'm not an attorney, so I rely upon them.
Well, that's okay, but I don't want to have one-sided discussion. I want to make sure that I indicate, I want to make sure...
Well, I don't agree with what you're saying. That's fine, just then. Also because you're attempting to change the Bloomingdale form of government, which can only be done through a change in the borough's charter, which can be accomplished only through the vote of the citizens. You can't just, the council cannot make this decision to change borough government. That has to be done by the voters.
I don't understand how that changes.
Because we'll no longer be a weak mayor and a strong council. Now you're going to be under, I think it's the Forfait Act.
No, no, but why won't it still be a weak mayor?
Because he's going to have all his executive responsibilities, which he does not have under the statute now.
And then who, under those executive responsibilities, does he report to? He reports to the council.
But he...
Just like an administrator. There's...
But you're giving those responsibilities to the mayor.
No, no.
Yes, you are.
The governing body is giving it to the mayor.
They can't.
Whoever the governing body calls.
The governing body cannot give it to the mayor because it's incompatible with the mayor's position. I would implore the council to not make a vote on this, but to know legally if it can be done. I contacted the Department of Community Affairs because I think, let me talk to someone who's within the bodies. And as they informed me, that it cannot be done, that it's subject to a legal challenge. And I can assure you, that's going to happen. Get discussed through. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
If you had a choice, would you sit in that position or that position? Not both. If you had a choice, would you sit there or sit there?
If I had a choice to sit in the A position or the mayor?
One or the other.
Well, but a choice wasn't presented to me.
If you had a choice.
But I don't have to make the decision because I'm being, the council's considering making me a full-time mayor.
I understand.
So it's not a choice I have to make.
See, I see it as there's a $2,000 difference here. You're going to get $2,000 plus your salary. But you also have the availability of vote in case there's a three-year timer. In other words, not only do you sit there, to me, that's what the conflict is. Whether you take that or turn to that one, neither here nor there, because you're in the tent and you're a good person. So whether you sit there or there, it doesn't bother you. It's the fact that you're going to, there's a conflict there. In my eyes, there's a conflict. And I can't settle it. That's not why I came to speak. When would the Avalon Bay project be approved?
Well, the final court settlement was January of last year. I mean, a planning board was approved.
2008?
Probably 2010. But it was a continued litigation. So it's finally settled in January 2012.
Okay. So when it has the Avalon Bay before a redevelopment plan? So you're going to build that without a redevelopment plan because the property there would build upon it.
Well, no, but again, the issue on that exact topic was no issues, no permits were issued, no buildings were in the ground. So it was not yet developed.
So the redevelopment came two years after an Avalon Bay project really was in effect.
Approved, not in effect. Well, the same thing would happen on Federal Hill. The mayor, the states were approved three years ago. We're going to do a redevelopment over that site as well.
See, I'm having a problem with the history of everything here. It seems I'm believing this back and that's back. The design as it stands now, it's all residential units. All units. It's going to be no retail stores.
Correct.
None.
Correct.
The appraisal on the project is $19 million. That you're going to be getting your taxes, that your taxes are going to be based on that assessment.
Well, but commercial development such as this is not based on pure assessed value like your home and my homes. It's an income approach.
If the design changes, that's what I'm saying, it will. If the design changes, does that dollar amount change?
No, well, under...
In other words, is there a tax, a different tax, is there a tax value on the unit and the retail versus, will you get a different income?
Well, if the pilot is passed, it would make no difference because that's a fixed amount of money.
Okay. What happens if the design change occurs? You don't have residential, but you're going to include retail.
Well, they would...
What would happen to the ordinance, the redevelopment, and everything?
Well, they, again, I'm afraid to be honest with you. They would, first of all, they'd have to come back to the planning board for any such approvals. But remember, this was a court order in that Laurel site. So if they make any attempts at a change, because it was only, it was only zoned and approved under the guidance of...
One of the exhibits to the agreement is the plans. So that's part of the agreement.
As far as the pocket, right, right, so...
Okay, so that, those plans will never change.
Well, if they change, the agreement can change.
Correct.
All the Avalon Bay meetings are conducted in the municipal building here, correct? With council people?
Or what meetings?
Avalon Bay, strictly Avalon Bay. Any other meeting will be conducted here.
If we're going forward...
In other words, any type of, you're discussing hanging in luau. You're discussing the plan. Whenever you have a meeting, where are they conducted?
They are, they're either conducted here or at attorney's office only in the presence of the attorney.
Okay. Is it ever, is there ever a one person at a meeting? In other words, is it, will you always have one or more than one person from the council?
Yes.
Always?
Always.
By minutes kept?
We have not kept minutes in the meeting.
I want to say they're not meetings with a full governing body.
No, no, I understand that. These are just Avalon Bay and an individual or two individuals from... So there would never be a meeting conducted outside of this building or your building? And there would always be more than one person with Avalon Bay in attendance?
That's the thousand and eighty.
It's only been a... Two meetings, two officials and myself.
On the behalf of the agents, then. Then there's the meetings with their, their site plan supervisors as far as, you know, utility issues and questions which have been...
Again, all meetings, none would either be independent in a municipal building or Mr. Semerow's building. I'm just out of my classification.
That's how it's been to date, and that's how I would comfortably say that's how, if there was going forward any meetings, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the agenda? Yes, anyone? Yes, Mrs. DeLazier, please state your name and address from the record.
General Dean DeLazier, 20 Glenmore Avenue.
Yes.
Is it necessary to have a business that used, Lily Byrne used to do that?
Well, it's not necessarily required.
That's what I mean. It isn't required.
Correct.
So do you have to have that?
I don't believe you have to have. It's not necessarily letting. You know, for example, municipal board or a tax assist or attorney statute or any position. It's in this government, it's a national position, right? I can't say that it's, that it's made.
So anybody should...
There's no requirement.
That's what I mean. I should think for $84,000, if I were younger, I would have thought... I think I could do it. She could too. That's what I mean, I haven't tried. I agree with, this is the way. The other thing, I think John would be more like a dictator. He's on every committee now, and he's here all the time. He don't need anybody else because he gets done when he wants to. Okay, I guess that's what I mean. I think a lot, and I don't say anything, I think.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the agenda? All right, seeing that way, you have a motion to close, please.
Someone?
All of there? All right. Item eight, presentation. We have a public hearing on the State County Open Space Armament Preservation Trust Fund for repair of the bleachers at DeLazier Field. The borough will be seeking application for $175,000 to do basic rework, brick recon, installation of handrails, and eliminating tripping hazards, and just restoring them generally overall, because it hasn't really ever been done. It's a need to be done. Part of the grant application requires a public hearing. So at this time, I need a motion to open the meeting for the public to make comment. Do I have a second? All of there? Yeah, is there anyone wishing to speak to? An application will be submitted to State County Open Space, seeking $175,000 for restoration of DeLazier Field grandstand. Are there motions to make comment? I have a motion to close, so we'll...
Second?
All of there? I would just ask that any member of the public who would be in support of this project, that it always helps our applications to receive letters of support. I've been soliciting letters from various youth groups, residents, and I've got to accumulate quite a few for our applications. So anyone here who wishes to present one, I would very much appreciate it. Item nine, reports from our professionals, department heads committees, liaisons, and myself. First, Jane, you have anything for us?
Nothing, nothing related to the county clerk. You can go on your website. She has her various outreach site dates and veteran ID dates. So it would be more on the county website.
Fred, you have anything?
Oh, no report this evening.
Governing body, you received a copy of the property maintenance report from December for your review. Just a few things on my end to bring you up to speed. I've arranged a meeting, a public meeting. Freeholder, Pat Lepore, is doing mobile meetings by himself. So on February 5th at 5:00 p.m., Freeholder Lepore will be here at Borough Hall. We have a meeting at 7:00 p.m. that evening. But I thank the patch for posting this so quickly, and we'll get it out on our Facebook and website. And hopefully residents will come by, one-on-one with Freeholder Lepore, to bring up any concerns they have on the county level. Again, February 5th at 5:00 p.m. Yeah, just to bring the council up to speed, I've met with Spartech, our IT company, to do inventory on our computer system. We've been on to proposals, various lease options because the, most of our PCs are quite outdated, and the council will have an opportunity to review that once completed. Our CFO, we have gone through negotiations with our part-time CFO. We'll be adopting a resolution tonight to retain at an annual rate of $25,000. Our CFO, who was hired originally for a new term basis in November, and that expires January 31st. We'll be moving along on that. I copied you on the resolution some time ago. I have all but about four departments' budget requests for 2013. I'm pleased to say pretty much everyone has come in flat. Some reductions, minor, and I'm hoping to receive the balance by Friday. And then the committee, budget committee, council of enforcement, Nelson Yazdi and Louie Rich, Councilor of... I'll copy you on all the budget reports. We will, you know, put that into our worksheets and begin that process, okay? We're going to discuss tonight, we have a review on vehicles, specifically in the construction department. We began interviews for our finance tax assistant position. Jerry Gallagher, our treasurer, and Barbara Neistat, our tax collector, participated in the interviews. And we have over 60 applicants. We narrowed the pool to 20, and narrowed that to 12. And then we've interviewed to date six candidates, and we hope to have an open recommendation council by February 5th. We're in the process of a meeting with finance department, budget committee. For those who wish, we can hand out bond council to review our refinancing on debt. And in fact, our bond council called me like this afternoon. So we're trying to schedule something for next week on that. Just a quick update on Sloan Park, our flood work. We are almost complete with the DEP to go out to bid by the end of February to hopefully see a late spring build out on our mitigation, flood mitigation project on Dan Dan and Sloan Park. Tonight, we're going to talk and authorize our utility mapping to map, digitally map our sewer water and storm water because we really have no concrete record of our infrastructure. Originally, I thought we'd be approving that two to five, but the treasurer wasn't able to certify funds, which is being paid for by the Avalon Bay utility permits, which to date have exceeded $600,000. So we will be authorizing $125,000 to map our utility system, which is step one in investing in our infrastructure. Also including that again is our storm water basin study, which again will uplift our flooding and clean up our storm water, which is quite an issue, and that's not probably been maintained for years. We recently auctioned off five vehicles that were out of service for the borough. We received over $10,300 from that auction, which can be considered a revenue for 2013. We're in the process of pricing a generator for DPW, for, excuse me, Farmers Hall and DPW Building. As you all know, DPW Building does not have a generator. So when we lose power, they lose power, and that's unacceptable. And Farmers Hall for a shelter, we're looking, we'll give numbers and see if we can get this done this year. The open space plan, which has been on the table for about two years, the revisions finally back to environmental conditions upon a review, and it will come to us. Avalon Bay project permits, we're hoping to anticipate in 2013 in excess of $430,000 in permits from Avalon Bay, which we hope to anticipate as a revenue prior to budget adoption. On February 26th, we will have a special meeting with the residents on Rathke Road. It will be an advertised meeting. Any members of the public can come. This is specific to residents in a project area. We received $300,000 in DOT funding to do a curb sidewalk paving project. We want to, we want the residents to have the discussion on the options we have with that project. So February 26th, so the council can mark the calendar. Bill paying online should be completed by the end of February. Working on bill paying online for other fees such as recreation, animal control. Each account has to be set up so deposits that are paid online go directly into these specific accounts. You can't have, for example, a recreation fee going to the current fund. It has to go into a specific direct trust fund. So we're eyeing that out, but at the same time, don't want to do it where we incur quite a bit of fees. So I'm trying to see maybe a debit card, check-only kind of situation. Just reaching with other towns, for example. neighboring towns have excess of $8,000 fees they absorb because of taxes online. We don't want to do that. We want to do it where there's no fee, which would be a check method. So hopefully we'll have that resolved. And then February 7th, there's a special meeting for Riverwalk discussion. You know, we received a $30,000 grant to do a Riverwalk study. And on February 7th at 7:00 p.m., here again, this will be a public advertised meeting. Now, council members, if we don't have a forum, then we don't have to advertise this one. The property owners will be, will be noticed. Now, council members, if we don't have a quorum, then we don't have to advertise this one. The property owners will be, will be noticed. I know Councilman Shortman will definitely be attending. I'd like to attend to it and learn about it. If we don't exceed, you know, three, we do, I really like everyone there to learn about it. So I'm going to state we probably will have a quorum and we should advertise it. Would everyone like to be there? I'm just going to be in case. As long as I have four, the answer is I'd like to be there. So we're going to advertise that, Jane, and ask Barbara if she can cover it because we have a clerk who definitely will be on vacation. So I'll switch on this, but we'll talk. All right, great. So we just want to clarify that. We also reviewing our fee ordinances and updating items such as our liquor license, peddler license. We have to add a mulch delivery fee, so we need to include that by hopefully our next meeting. The mulch delivery contracts have been completed. We're going to have to start marketing that program, the mulch delivery program. We're going to offer through our DPW revenue generator. Have a meeting tomorrow with our Vasa Insurance Agency discussing our safety protocol meetings, which will help us discount our insurance. I sent you all emails today about ethics and Oprah meeting, Kimmel on sponsoring. If any of us, all of us, attend, we receive a two hundred fifty dollar per person credit on insurance, so we can get a max of seventeen fifty if we all attend. Okay, so do your best. There's also an online course. That's free. I send everyone an email. There again, we get credit towards our quarterly safety max credits on the Jiff Land, so stays a potential line. All right. We see form notification, as you know, the county that they funded our additional money on the Walter T. Irving restroom will be altered by New York tech. And you have, there's a couple other items, but those are the most important we have around before. Okay, any questions on any of those items? All right, thank you. Consent agenda.
Yes. I just wanted, as a liaison.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rich. Yeah, just.
That's just fine. I, I just attended the reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. And I just wanted to say that at that meeting, that was the first Board of Education meeting since the Sandy Hook shooting. And superintendent group, we don't, had incredibly positive things to say about our police department and Chief Farrell specifically, and how they responded locally to the events there and helped, you know, calm everybody's fears, you know, after that tragedy. So, you know, they deserve some kudos for how they responded there. I know, I know they're continuing working still to, right, but he specifically said he couldn't say a good things about them. Good. Thanks for that.
Anyone else have anything?
I attended the first meeting of the Environmental Commission where the master play, the master, open space master plan was discussed and distributed to members who are reviewing it with the planning board recommendations. And probably the first weekend of February, we will go over that together with input.
Did you clarify those questions then, which one was?
The one upstairs was wrong. One Barbara has is, is the one. The other one should be done away with because it's incomplete, the one that we have applied.
It was a draft. It was a little draft. Just want to make sure there's no confusion on that. Anyone else? Thank you. Consent agenda, we're simply approving, authorizing a two hundred twenty-five dollar payment for the Butler High School yearbook, which we do each year, and also approval for applications to the Bloomingdale Fire Department for Michael Mizzola, Brian Gunn, and Nicholas Catson. I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, Fred, that was a non-agenda item. We'll be adding Carrie Napparano as a junior prior. Okay, so that's our consent. Do I have a motion to move consent agenda?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, pending business. We will be authorizing professional services to DMC associates, land surveyors. For 2013 professional land surveying services, each year we have a contract. It's normally a flat amount because of our tax maps we're doing and our, and our revale. There's no need. We were going to, we're going to set it at one hundred fifty dollar per hour with a cap max of 2013 at four thousand dollars for incidental surveying and tax map issues. But we'll also be authorizing the utility infrastructure mapping. Again, we've all been copied before the meeting on these proposals. We have, we have received a few proposals from our utility department, all, all in excess of one hundred eighty to two hundred thousand. This is one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which will be again, feeding digital maps of our sewer, entire sewer, entire water, entire storm water infrastructure. Every pipe, every, every connection, sizes, everything we need in a digital format so that we can then begin investment into repairing our infiltration, our I and I, and once and for all, you know, solve, fix our infrastructure. We had another one to make right today on First Street, just for the record. I think we're the fourth one on that street in six years. So I need a motion to approve those for DMC.
Question, man?
Yeah, let's make the motion. Motion by you, second?
Second.
And discussion? Yes, ma'am?
On the water, they were going to, the sizes down there?
amend the size pipe, yeah.
And the material of pipe that's in the ground?
So we'll, we'll amend, you're right. We have confirmation email of that, as you saw. So we'll amend, the approval is based on addition of sizing. Mike, just clarify again. I don't have the email.
Is the, the water main, the water side of it, not the sewer, the center of it, the water size, the size of the pipes and the material of the pipes?
Pipe sizing and material is included in this proposal, so that resolution is continually based on that. 2013, one point three one, and I, is further discussion? And I need a roll call, please?
Councilmember Conville. Motto.
Yes.
Shorten. Yes, Sondemire.
Yes. Yes. Okay, item B, streets being considered for name change. Simply going to, I want a motion to refer to government operations. Just before, last year, the tax office did a spreadsheet on streets with duplicate names and showed you the population, which street has the least amount of residents. Some are very close. I'm going to refer to government ops for discussion, have a discussion with each street because this can be a cumbersome issue, especially for the residents. I know, John, you had suggested maybe just an overlay name, so they're not, okay, almost like we did on dedication on certain streets, so it's not such an impact on residents. So all the documents, social securities, driver's license, all of them, some talk for those. So again, just give me a motion to refer to government ops, so we know what they're, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? And just give me a, all in favor of that?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item C, ordinance is tonight's second final reading and public hearing on ordinance one dash, one dash 2013 rental dwelling units. Just to give everyone an idea, this is an ordinance to require one to two family rentals to register with the borough. And upon tenant changes, we will notify and reregister, and so we keep an eye on occupancies in various units in town. So public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Murray, this ordinance was posted in the business bills and published in the Herald News. Copy is available to the public and a motion may be made that be read by title.
And do I have that motion to read by title, please?
Move.
And Peter Agasty, second by Sondemire, and all in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance at the Borough of Bloomingdale, the county of St. Louis, State of the Church, U3, Chapter 11, Building and Housing, Paling, Section 11-6, Rental of leased residential property, and inserting new Section 11-6 rental dwelling units.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak to ordinance one dash 2013, please come up, state your name and address for the record. See no one, motion to close?
Someone.
All in favor? And a motion to adopt?
Someone.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Councilmember Motto.
Yes.
Del Rippe.
Yes.
Shorten. Yes, Sondemire.
Yes.
Yasti.
Yes.
Conville.
Second final reading and public hearing, ordinance two dash 2013 financial agreement with Bloomingdale Irving Renewal, formerly known as Avalon Bay, that is there, named for this specific project. Do I have a public notice statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Murray, this ordinance was posted in the business bills and published in the Herald News. Copy is available to the public and a motion may be made that be read by title.
And who makes that motion?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance accepting and approving, approving an application by Bloomingdale Irving Renewal LLC, formerly known as Avalon Bay Communities LLC, for a financial agreement with the Borough of Bloomingdale pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 20, dash, one.
Thank you. And do I have a motion of the public here?
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak to ordinance two dash 2013, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
The document eighty-six being made in, on the calendar. The fifth paragraph, it says it's going to be annual service charge payments. I thought it was supposed to be quarterly.
Which, which paragraph?
The, um, fourth paragraph, part fifth paragraph.
Of the ordinance?
Gladly intending annual service charge payments. It was supposed to be quarterly payments.
It will be quarterly payments.
Can you revise that?
No, that's in a different section.
That's just the whereas. It does say you're going to have to make annual payments, but it'll be made quarterly and so on.
We could say that if they're going to do that.
It says that in the agreement, and that's the way the payment of the tax law works. So it just says, that's the whereas, because that's just an act to the ordinance.
In the agreement, it actually specifically says, made first, it actually specifies.
Just like in the old, like, annual tax payments for, for, for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to two dash 2013? See no one, and a motion to close, please?
Someone.
Is that, all in favor? And I need a motion to adopt, the private program for Bloomingdale Irving Renewal.
Someone.
Second. And is there any further discussion? I need a roll call.
Councilmember Del Rippe.
Yes.
Shorten. No. Sondemire.
Yes.
Yasti.
Yes.
Conville.
No. Yes. Okay, thank you. I have three, second final reading. A public hearing of ordinance three dash, three dash 2013. Funds received from any financial agreement, such as a pilot, this again is the ordinance that will dedicate funds received from such an agreement as a pilot. Will be dedicated to debt relief and tax stabilization, and any impacts to the schools as a result of such a project will be funded by the state. So can I have a public notice statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Murray, this ordinance was posted in the business bills and published in the Herald News. Copy is available to the public and a motion may be made that be read by title.
And who makes that motion?
Someone.
Second.
And all in favor?
An ordinance to establish under Chapter Two Administration Art, Culture, Policies and Procedures, the creation of Section 2-76.8, funding received from financial agreements related to redevelopment projects and financial agreements pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 20, dash, one, also known as payment and move taxes or pilot agreements shall be dedicated to taxpayer relief.
I will pass. Thank you. I have a motion of the public here. Yasti, Shortman, and the, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to the three, 2013? Ordinance, please come up, state your name and address for the record. See no one, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Someone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt?
Someone.
Second. Yasti, Demotto, and any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shorten. Yes. Sondemire.
Yes.
Yasti.
Yes.
Conville.
Yes.
Del Rippe.
Yes. Thank you. Second. Thank you. On item four, five, and six, which I stepped down from, attorney's response, we're doing a quick executive session. There's more people in, out there than up here, and everybody uses themselves in those. Is that right? Does that everyone have to do? There will be attorney client privilege, respect the discussion about the legal issues of the next two ordinances. Okay. And so again, being that I'm not participating, I look as council president to offer a vote.
As council president, the, we're going to go into the executive session at eight, ten. Any motion on that?
Someone.
Second.
Need a roll call?
Probably shook.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we resume at eight thirty-four. This time I'll defer to our attorney. The, there's, there's two ordinances. Four dash two thirteen and five dash two thirteen, which we made to the position of part-time versus full-time mayor and authority of the government body. Based on the information that was provided this evening and opinion on that was rendered, I don't, I don't have the opinion, I think. My, my advice to the government body was, I'd like to confer with Mr. McCabe and present him with all the information and verify that he has the information and relay back to you as the governing body of, of an opinion or an evaluation of what was said this evening. I certainly don't want the governing body to act with any cloud over it. So with that being said, it's, it's better to review whatever's been raised, and I'd be willing to do so. So my recommendation to the governing body is to table this ordinance. It's a table at somewhat short notice because in the meantime, you still have, in this case, the mayor doing just what would happen, and that is working full-time hours, and there's really no, no form of any compensation for that. So I'd, I'd like to ask the governing body that I have the opportunity to review the facts and information that was presented and ask if you could table this to a special meeting on relatively short notice. It was discussed, and perhaps a special meeting could be on Monday, just to discuss this topic. So given everyone's schedule, is there, or ask if there'd be a motion to table this to a special meeting on Monday? Discussion was Monday at eight thirty AM to revisit this matter.
Someone.
Second. I think it was discussed eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
So that would be the motion?
Chair, you have a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Sondemire.
Yes.
Yasti.
Yes.
Conville.
Yes.
Motto.
Yes.
Del Rippe.
Yes.
Shorten. Yes.
Okay, hold on one second. Linda?
Yes.
Could we have the information that you have? So Fred can refer back that when he speaks into Mr. McCabe.
I can give you what I wrote up. It's just, otherwise I was writing scribbling notes, but I can give you what I.
But like, like, it's just, otherwise I'm writing scribbling notes, but I can give you what I.
Do you know, Mr. McCabe, did Mr. McCabe give you anything in writing?
No, I have to, it's, it's, it's Rick Solatch, that's his name. And then I thought she was okay, and I should be telling this, and this is.
All right, um, all right, thank you. Moving along, new business, uh, twelve day, twelve days hearing on a decision of the building department on property maintenance. So we're going to take a five minute recess, because Ray has to set up the powerpoint pictures, so we can discuss with the, uh, the. All right, actually, uh, item A, hearing decision from building department on property maintenance, six, West Pointe Vista, so actually, Mr. Marletta, D. Marletta, you want to come up? You're representing, uh, the owner of like yourself, I mean. Sorry? Yeah, well, no, I didn't, also, where this is, uh, destruction official, Mr. Dan Hager, and, uh, I'll just grab a stance here, if you have any questions. The office observed the property having debris and material stored outside of the garage, these items should be removed, must be removed in the garage area, and for ordinance three, three eight point five, prohibited storage of outdoor items. In addition, this office must advise you that current property accessory building is vacant and must comply with the following provisions. All windows and vacant structures must be screened, barred, or grilled with quick release mechanisms. Exterior walls and roofs shall be water tight, weather tight, rodent proof, and shall be kept in sound condition and good repair, and safe to support its normal design load. Number three, every window and door must be kept in working water and in good repair. Number four, any yard area, front, rear, side adjacent to an unoccupied structure shall be cleared and maintenance free of debris. Number five, unoccupied building shall not be used to store any material. Property must be compliant within fourteen days, and the extension of time must be recommended to the governing body, and you have the right to appeal this determination to the mayor council within three days. Received this notice, all appeals are made in writing, received by the court, and so on. So that's what Mr. Marletta has done. And, um, that's why we're here today. So first I'll defer to, to Dan, do you have any opening remarks or anything you want to say other than what I just read into the record?
No, sir.
Mr. Hager.
Yes, sir.
If you could just come up for one minute.
Thanks.
Could you just explain to the governing body the significance of, you know, why you issued this letter?
Oh, absolutely. There, uh, the property in total is a, is an unoccupied house, single family house, and the garage next to it is, uh, pictured on the, on the screen over there. There were complaints and there were concerns from the building department and from fire prevention, that, uh, that the building in its, in its state, in its state right now is, is not safe from fire, and presents a clear and imminent hazard in the event, uh, emergency personnel would have to respond to that property for any reason. In addition to that, under section three dash three point five, uh, it limits, it limits the storage of items outdoors, and from the photos that the council's going to see, there is, there is items that are stored around the building and around the house as well that needs to be cleaned up.
Could you, could you go ahead and just walk the council through those photos? Did you take those photos?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, could, could you just walk? So actually, Ray, if you could just, thanks, say where he is, and you go through.
As you can see, the garage, this is looking at her from, uh, the front at the cul-de-sac on six, Wayne of Vista. There is a, there is a detached garage, which is covered with the tarp right now, and the, uh, side window on the, I'm going to say, east side of the building is, is not, is not there and open. The back of the building, there is some, that's the back of the building, looking at it on the property, uh, there is storage, uh, a portion of that, that, I'm sorry, that's on the west side of the building, and that's a backup shot. There is, there is materials and, and, uh, items stored on the left side and towards the back as well. That's the two back windows of the building, they're not, they're open, uh, to the outside. That's, uh, either the back or the side of the building, I, I can't be for sure, but there's an attempt to put, uh, plastic over it, but, uh, some of them, some of the property that's inside the building is clearly exposed to the elements there. So that's a repeat picture. That's a side doorway in there that's not there. Uh, you can clearly see that there's material in there leading to infestation, and, uh, the other problem with this building is if there was a reason to go in there, it would be clearly unsafe for fire or emergency personnel, or anybody in the area, to happen and wander in there. That's the material on the west side of the building from the previous shot, that's stored against the building. That's looking through the doorway into the, into the, into the actual inside structure. And that's a close-up of the material on the west side of the building. This goes to the main structure, uh, it's a single family house, single story, that window is missing, and the, you can see the deterioration on the side of the top, as well as the, uh, the siding to the house. That's just another close-up of the deterioration of the window, the missing window. That's the stairway leading to a porch area, which is, uh, you'll have a close-up on the next picture. That's the porch area that was in the preceding picture, you can see that it's deteriorating, the floor is also warped. That's on the lower, that's just in there, right? Uh, I think it's upside down. Well, where, where the box is, yeah. Okay, if you can come up a little bit, that's, that's the siding is missing from the house, and the sheen is deteriorated, it's opening to the house. This is the porch area, step out. There's, there's minimal debris on the porch, but there's, there's just issues with the property, you know, property in total. That's a toilet that's laying in the backyard. That's the rear door of the house, it's not the side view of it, that's it. The, the storm door is closed, but the door beyond it is open, leading into the house. This is a sliding door, there's a refrigerator on the lower section where you step out and the door's open. That's just a close-up of the refrigerator. This is the east side of the building, facing the garage, there's a little porch area, there's a cooler out front, there's some other obstructions, and the door is open, leads into the house. I think that's just a close-up of it. That's a recessed area, I don't know if it's, if it's landscape or if it's a depression, uh, but it clearly presents an obstacle, as you can see, as the ground gets snow-covered, it's covered with lightning, potential hazard if there was, uh, emergency personnel on the property.
Okay, I guess I was supposed to. Thank you, Dan. So, um, it says, as the letter states, Mr. Marletta has the right to appeal this, uh, determination to the governing body, and that brings us here tonight. So, Dean, I'll defer to you now, I mean, I just, I have to ask you, first question, what is it that you're appealing?
Well, um, the only appeal is that, uh, initially, he's giving me fourteen days to take care of something that's been there for twenty-five years. All the pictures you've seen there, uh, I purchased the house a little more than maybe a year and a half, two years ago, and the house exactly the way it was. That house had a little old lady living in it, fifteen years in that condition, and no one's done anything, died, no one's done anything, no, they didn't think about it. Uh, once she passed away, uh, we wanted to purchase the property to fix it up. So what you're seeing is twenty-five plus years of debris has been there. We purchased the house, like I said, a little more than two years ago, uh, started working on it. The tarp that you see was put on for hurricane ice cream, because it had holes in the top of the roof, um, to keep things, you know, to keep the water out. We, uh, we got a permit to do the demo on the house and the garage, which, we dabbled the garage, cleaned the garage out, um, got rid of the car that was sitting in the front. The windows that were open, that were originally open with plastic on them, um, I guess hurricane sand pushed the last, you know, the plastic on, on plastic. The stuff that's inside is things that we were purchasing to put into the house. Stuff that's on the outside, two by fours, things of that nature, um, are, are rebuilding, and I quit those out there. I spoke to Dan, and I know Dan very well, and I spoke to Dan, and Dan said to stack it up nicely inside, and I did. So I have the permit to do the demo, start doing demo on, on the house, uh, but unfortunately, this last year, I haven't been able to, because I've been very ill. So, I mean, the bottom line is, I'm not leaving the house the way it is. Where we bought the house, we spent over, you know, a lot of money on the house, bought it and to fix it up, to get it ready to have my mother-in-law move in, that's what I have. So everything that you're seeing has been there, other than the stuff that I, I stored to work on. So the bottom line is, I'm not leaving the house the way it is. It's unfortunate that I've been very ill this last year, I haven't been able to do anything, and recently had multiple surgeries, so I'm not able to really do any destruction as yet. So I, I mean, I'm asking the, the mayor and council to, uh, you know, take these, take these infractions, and, you know, I will fix them, but it, it's going to take some time for me physically and financially to take care of these items. So it's not like I'm going to leave it the way it is, because it's an investment, but I don't want to give any tax on something, you know, I'm not going to sell. I mean, that's the bottom line. I'm not, I'm not here to create a haster, you know, and, uh, you know, I just feel like, you know, the only reason Dan's out there is because I have neighbors that can't mind their own business. That's what it comes down to. I spoke to Dan about this many times, and I've even applied for permits to do, redo the garage and redo the house. We've had to change some things, so, yeah, finish that process. So that's, that's where I'm at now, and that's the bottom line.
Dean, how much time do you need to finish this up?
Right now, I can, I can't deal with the handle. I mean, I need time to do it, plus I haven't worked in six months, so financially, um.
If I, if I may, I don't.
Yes.
You have building permits to do what you envisioned to do ultimately to this home.
Well, I have to.
And we, no, that's, we get that, we get that part, but, um, but the, the items, the five, the six, the five items mentioned on the, on the violation have nothing to do with you reconstructing, remodeling this home to make it livable again.
Right, but the demo.
They have to do with absolute public health and safety issues.
The five, the demo, the five demos were there, directly put them over there. You know, the windows, the windows were jagged, so if anybody stepped in the room, it, it would cut them, so I took the windows out, they were back, so.
I think, okay, let's start with that. So the issue is, they, they must be screened, barred, or grilled.
Right.
On a big structure, that's our code.
Right, but I want to put windows back in, I understand.
But you're not, but you're not actively constructing, so, I mean, I guess the theory is, you know.
When you say actively constructing, you're saying, do I have to work on it every single day? Or do I, you know, work on as, you know, when people do projects, they do it as they can, as long as they continue to work on it, they don't need the project for X amount of.
Try to separate the construction part to the conditions of the premises.
Right.
There's a difference here. I understand the construction, and I know them both, I mean, you know, for the record, I've known Dean, you know, for, for a number of years, and I, I know his vision on this, but, but it is absolutely unsightly, and the issue is, you know, a toilet on your front lawn has nothing to do with you constructing the house, make it go over.
Right, and that's the back, and that toilet's probably been there for forty-five years.
But in the past, it's nothing either. No one complained when, when the elderly woman had it, it's not an issue, the issue is in front of us now. So I believe it's, we're not dealing with the construction, Dan's not saying, you put a new roof on the house, you're not actively at the point of rebuilding because of various reasons.
Right, I, I gotta clean the house out, there's four piano's in there, and there's stuff in there. The problem is, physically, last year, I haven't been able to do that, and I haven't been able to do it financially as well. I mean, we've gone, we've gone down to where we.
I guess I could sum it this way. Knowing, knowing you have an open permit, and knowing, what, you know, Dan, that's, that's, there's a plan to do something. Knowing that, it'll help your cause, but still doesn't eliminate the condition of what's there now, for the safety, public health and safety issue. Open windows, I mean, kids can get in there, crawl in there, vermin, rodent, mold can, can be developing and escape, because you have open doors, open windows and all of that. The garage is, is packed, you know, where, where the sides are bolted, you know, you didn't buy it that way.
No, no, I, there's, I'm storing stuff in there for future practice, like there's, there's.
Furniture and cabinets that will be, will be used in the kitchen. But, but you're storing them with, with open windows?
Well, I put plastic on the windows that, when we bought the property, some of the windows went on, I put plastic over them. When we did the demo, cleaned everything out, put plastic over them, and then I'm going to move on to the main part of the house, and I'm going to take the windows out of the process as well. I mean, it's part of the demo process.
Do you agree the grounds can be cleaner?
The grounds can be cleaner, absolutely, but like I said, the stuff's been there, I have no idea what it is yet, and we're still dealing with, you know, trying to figure out what to do in Jerry Wise. I mean, most of that stuff has been there, you know, with something else.
Dan, I'll defer back to you, you have any comments?
Well, Mrs. Sauer left, lived there prior to him. We had several, what is it?
Sayers.
Sayers, I'm sorry. She, she was, lack of a better term, she was a little disoriented and a little neurotic. The only person that could talk to her was Captain Muller, because she remembered him from years ago. Uh, we did have the Sayer County Health and the Dooming Services go out there and talk to her. Unfortunately, they determined that she was sane, even in that environment, and it restricted what we could do with her, okay? Problem, the problem being is, I understand that, that Dean bought this, or his mother-in-law, whoever bought his property, but the problem is, the property is, is continuing to deteriorate, it's vacant, now it's becoming a hazard, and I, I've already talked to, you know, Bob Westike, and I've talked to Mark Klein. God forbid there was a fire at either one of those properties, they burned to the ground, it would not go in either of those buildings. They're not safe, the roofs aren't safe, the walls aren't safe, the interior load combustion on there is incredible, I mean, you know, to have. on there is incredible, I mean, you know, to have a fireman risk his life in lieu of that house, it, you know, but I don't, to stay here, to sit here and say it's got to continue because of extenuating circumstances, this is the reason why I did this and notified Dean, because our property maintenance officer runs into this problem in other parts of town, in other sections that aren't that far from where Dean is, and it gets, it gets lost in court with, I'm going to, I'm going to get it taken care of. I understand Dean has health issues, which I wasn't aware of, but, you know, those are all contributing factors to tell, basically, to reporting back to the mayor and council, there's nothing I can do. Now, I'm glad that Dean brought this to mayor and council's attention, because this is, you know, this is a dilemma, and we're not picking on Dean any more than anybody else, but this property is become, is a potential hazard to the neighborhood, it's definitely a hazard to the fire department or police department, and, you know, I wouldn't even want the police to go into either one of those structures looking for a missing judge. It doesn't have to be a fire or an emergency, it could be anything.
You think, is the current condition worse than it was when it was a Sater occupied house?
Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions? You've ordered appeal to us, and the council can talk about it and tell you the decision. I mean, I, it's just a matter of cleaning it, I mean, I, problem, well, I know, I just don't, yeah, just listen. I know you have plans, what your plans are, when they may occur, economy's tough, your health was the issue, we absolutely have the passion to all that, but I think there are things you can do to make this a little more tolerable until you do your real renovation. And those things are, absolutely securing all those open openings, windows, doors, who are you? When our building inspector inspects a building that's vacant, that has the main entrance door or side door wide open with glass door on it, it can't be good, right?
Well, I'm just saying, that's exactly the way to have, when I walked the house, I had the flesh in the main part of the house, sliding back door...
So, there's more debris now?
Well, on the main, on the main house, absolutely not, exactly the way you put it.
More debris on the premises then?
Well, then the wood on the side of the garage, that's the only official place that I put there for work.
I guess what I'm looking for you is, make the offer.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, we're going to clean it up.
No, 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 not a year from now, make the offer, so this company body can deliberate on how they want to, you're looking for a timeline. The issue is, there's a violation of code here. We absolutely can deny your request of the appeal, and Dan takes the next steps, which is going to court, and the judge is going to see these photos and not have mercy. And I think what we're saying is, there's things you can do to help yourself, help the neighbors, help possibly our position we have to take on it, and those things are, you know, boarding those windows, so there's no access to it, shoring up the concerns on the front porch, locking and securing, I mean, if you're not touching, just board everything up, you know, so there's no access through these openings, these windows, it's absolutely a hazard. The garage is bouldering, it's stuff.
Can I ask you a question? So, when I do, when I do the demo, and I take the windows out, and I take the doors, we take down the ceiling, you know, the sheetrock, and rugs, everything, and then have them into frames, so I can see the condition of it, is, is it still going to be where I have to put the windows on at the time to make it secure?
You're going to, you're going to have to secure that site while you're doing construction, you're going to tear it down to the studs, there's no reason to tear the outside of the house apart.
No, but the windows, like, some windows are missing, they're missing.
Then you put a piece of plywood over it, I mean, it's, you know, it's just because...
So, I can't, I can't demo the doors, demo everything without putting something over, I have to, so when you're, when you're framing the house, you frame it clean, and none of the windows are in it, isn't that considered the same thing as if I demoed the house?
Absolutely not, because when you're framing the house, within a week or two, you've got the windows, you've got the tie back on, you've got the roof...
Well, absolutely runs out of money, they can't fit the windows. I'm just, I'm just playing with the fact...
I understand that, but what we're doing is, we're going from, we're going from a rundown piece of property to trying to renovate it. If the, if it can't be renovated, then the borough's position, at least my position, is demolish it. Build another house when you have the money, because that house is deteriorating right now with the snow, with the wind, with the rain and everything else, that house is deteriorating, it's not staying in stable condition. It's a matter of time before animals get in there, it's infested, it's, you know, a tree falls down on it, the house, you know, and the barn as well, they're, it's just a time bomb there. It's not getting better, where new construction that runs out of money, you've got some time in there as that material weathers and so forth. This house has been neglected for 25 years from Mrs. Sauer, Sater, and it's, it's only worse now because it's now it's open. At least you couldn't get into the house when she had it, she went leaching.
But there were windows there?
Well, there were windows, there were doors, I don't know if the house was seated, but you're absolutely right, there's 25 years of deterioration there. For all intents and purposes, I'd love to have, where the hell it's going in there, and condemn it, get the house torn down, that'd solve everybody's problems. And you build a house when you want to.
All right, well, like I said, bottom line is, I'm going to fix it, I mean, if I need to give you a timeline, then, you know, I can say, with everything that's been going on, I would have it cleaned up, the outside cleaned up, the windows closed in, you know, water flight and everything, at least within six months. And I can't do it right now, I mean, weather-wise, it pushes to at least March.
You could board windows, you've got windows...
It's for snow, right? It's for the snow. And I don't have the financial to do it right now, because I've got to work for five months. I mean, there's one, two, three, there's four, I mean, I now try to get those windows, I just physically...
Again, not to, just know by the name, your mother-in-law's the owner of the house.
My mother-in-law is our only client, we own the house with her, that's...
So, with their assistance, these immediate things can't be done, so you don't have to go to court and get summons, which is going to make your problem more difficult. Well, that's what we're trying, you know, just, we'll back up, in 2012 or 2011, believe anybody, you implemented zero tolerance, really trying to step up on property maintenance, you know, and you see the difference in the old time where the town can't tolerate some of these conditions, town-wide, it just affects all of our property values, because from an interest standpoint, it's just a negative for the borough. So, there's that zero tolerance, so at the same time, we don't want to contradict our own positions on zero tolerance and just let things like this be ignored once they're brought to our attention. So, you know, what we're asking you is, you know, we just outright deny around eight to six months, you're going to go to court, it's just not going to help your financial situation any whatsoever. So, we, and I understand your personal situation, but your mother-in-law's really the owner. With their assistance, it can't be boarded up...
She's 72 years old, I mean, she's not going to go out and board up the windows. I mean, she's on the title...
You know that's not right, you're just not working with it here.
Believe me, if I could go board it up tomorrow, I would, I just can't do it myself. I can't physically do it right for a second. Plus, it's 40 degrees.
Well, no, I'm, but the boarding up is just more than passive. You know, the debris, I mean, besides Dan saying, stack your lumber neatly, that's fine, but there's more than lumber, there's toilet, there's cooler, refrigerator, there's a wheelbarrow...
Like I said, all that stuff's been there, we haven't addressed it only because we're trying to, we started wanting to do demo on the garage, since the garage was the easiest thing to do. The house is...
What did you do on the garage? It's just full of stuff.
No, the garage had walls in it, had sheetrock, it was moldy, we got the wall in mold, we got the wall in sheetrock, we got the wall to electric the wire, we got that air stud going out, and then, you know, the roof was, the roof had six-foot holes, so I wanted to cover it up and keep it from getting in and out.
Do you have any more comments, questions, concerns? Counsel, anything?
I can just, one question, Mr. Hager, when did you first mortify Mr. Moletta of your concerns? I know you have a letter of December 13th, but before that, did you have a number of visits or discussions with him?
I had complaints, but I did talk to him about cleaning it up, I don't recall when, I'll take his timeline, only because I don't remember.
But was it a month before you wrote this letter?
Probably longer than that, it was high over the summer, but it was, you know, we came in, he took out the permits, there was every indication that we weren't, that it wasn't going to become a problem. Once we went out there, we waited until December, when we started getting, you know, additional complaints and inquiries, and we went out there and, you know, unfortunately, the pictures bare looked at.
And then you wrote this letter on December 13th, and you gave him 14 days, and just trying to...
I gave him 14 days under the notice, because I, and I also was specific that if he, you know, the only recourse he would have would be go to mayor and council and do the property maintenance ordinance.
And now, the matter was stayed because he filed an appeal, absolute recording of the case.
Well, he's got, yeah, he's got, if he's, you know, depending on what mayor and council directs the office to do, we'll do a recording.
Yeah. The deliberation should take place right in the public portion of the case now, as to what the recommendations would be, or if we're going to either grant the appeal with some type of modification, or deny the appeal, which would be, we'd work right back to Mr. Hager, the 14 days would begin to run, and then Mr. Hager person, present the motion, hold the matter through the courts if necessary.
Right, based on the zero tolerance, we're trying to enforce zero tolerance in this town, no more of giving brothers out there for people to see and all of that, and it's the first case that's coming in front of us, right? I'm sitting here going, you know what, I may make this guy a full-time mayor, pay him for it, and if he doesn't do a good job, I'm going to be the one that's going to fire him. And the first case that comes in front of us after we pass the zero tolerance, I can't turn around and say...
Even though there's...
Now, now, I've settled that, based on the fact that you've got some physical elements, as long as you can work out a schedule, and as long as Dan can work with you, to come up with a schedule that's reasonable, put up, you know, over the next couple of weeks, you know, and over the next six months, clean this place up, I'd be willing to live with that, because of your situation. But I don't want to get into a habit of just letting... Because they're coming to appeal it, that'd be a long... No, that's not zero tolerance, zero tolerance means zero tolerance.
That would be my view of it, so, I just want to kind of say about...
I mean, the first time when Dan came to me, that's when I let him got the permit to do the demo, but again, I was in and out of hospital last year four times, so that's, fortunately, I couldn't necessarily do it. I mean, that's, this is what I do, for those of you who don't know me, I'm a builder, this is what I do. So, doing the job is not a problem, physicality of doing it became an issue of doing it, where...
You work on yourself?
Was that, you work on yourself, you have approval? Off and on, yes, I mean, I do, I mean, I have a little hire, some contractors, if the job is big, but the majority of the job, the work that I do on myself, yes. So, if I had, believe, if I had approval for our guys, it wouldn't be an issue.
Beyond the way I see it, and your state, you've got to hire somebody, at least get the order to wind the house secure, that has to be done, because of the safety end of it, we can't take a chance if a child goes in there, roof collapsing, a fire starting, we just can't take that chance. Little kids stray where they don't belong. An open door is wide open for a kid to go in there, and it's going to be unsafe. I think that has to be done immediately. The outside cleaned up, I can give you some leeway and get the outside cleaned up, get a dumpster, pick up the toilet, whatever you got to do with refrigerators, and get that stuff off the property. Something else, the picture that I've seen, if you live next to me, I'd be up here every day in Dan's office, because it's two years, not two weeks, not two months, it's two years since you owned the house, and I don't see it getting better. And I've been down that road many times before I've sat up here, I know exactly what house you're talking about, but safety-wise, that house has to be boarded up immediately, and I don't, I think that's, that's the first thing that has to be done. I can give you a little bit of leeway and get the outside cleaned up, it is 10 degrees out, but I think if you get a dumpster, I kind of agree with Dan, just all things should be done, but I think at least we need to start and get the house boarded up immediately, that's just the money. I don't want to take a chance of anybody going in there, especially a child, and something happens, you give me six months to board up windows? I don't feel comfortable with that. I think two weeks is more than enough, to get plywood on the doors.
Anyone else? Comments?
Yeah, I think if your neighbors start seeing you doing something, the windows being boarded up, they'll kind of let off a little bit because of just a little bit of progress, it's just...
I totally agree with everything that John has said, I do feel sorry for you, but I would not like to have you burn a neighbor, I would not like to live there. I think the overwhelming aspect of this is the safety aspect, perhaps you have some friends, or family, or your own children who could pinch in and start doing something, but you have to make this structure safe or knock it down, and I think, you know, it's got to, week by week, you've got to show progress that you're doing something, somehow, some way, some community group, your own family, somebody who'll come in, because nobody really wants to live in a community like this. I do feel sorry for your neighbors.
Anyone else? I think in the direction of the government bodies, you know, we don't want to make your situation worse by any means, and at the same time, we have to respect the code, the neighbors, the environment, everything, ours is zero tolerance, we certainly, you know, is the health issue, before the health goes in front of us, condemn it and probably, I mean...
I don't know, but I have not been in the building.
Counsel, we want to mention two weeks, so, okay, can we, the decision now from the government body can be as follows, we have two weeks to board up all the openings, okay, to get you through the winter, and if in two weeks, that's not done, it's all that's off, back to Dan, and he takes the next course of action.
That's fine.
So, it's two weeks of board up all the openings, and they're clearly identified what they are. Dan, is there anything else besides, that seems to be the biggest issue under the media services, is there anything else you say that should be known in that two-week period? And I know, though, that there's more, I'm just saying from an emergency standpoint, initially.
I would just like to, you know, he's got that tarp on that building, if that roof isn't sound, you know, that's got to be done, not in a two-week period, but he's going to have to get, he's going to have to address that within a 30-day period or whatever. I mean, my alternative is, go, you know, get an architect, tell me what has to be done, tear down the building. I really have sincere questions about the structural integrity of the main house, only because I know who lived in that house and the conditions she lived in that house, it was deplorable.
I agree with you, but like I said, that's why we wanted the demo, to expose everything, see what is...
I mean, it may not be able to, it might have to be knocked down.
Yeah, well, at that point, if he gets an architect or an engineer, then, you know, we'll keep it up, otherwise, I'll issue an unsafe structure and order the building down.
Should there be some type of signage on the building, Jack, now?
Well, I can post it as an unsafe, the problem is, pursuant to uniform construction code, once I post it, I've got to, I've got to order them to repair it, vacate it, or demolish it. The easy answer for me is demolish it, go get an architect and tell me that it's structural sound, but now you're spending money where you don't, you know, you don't necessarily have to spend it. But I haven't been in, I haven't been in the building, and nobody's been in that building since the lady that lived in there, and like I said, she was neurotic, and I'm sure that house was deplorable inside.
Because of those health concerns, I mean, and watch our attention, they can't be ignored, so, all right, I think the council is leaning towards two-week timeframe to board up all the openings, and then utilizing an April 1st date, that you must provide Dan with something from an architect saying it's structurally sound.
I mean, the problem is, it needs to be, the interior needs to be cleaned out and demoed for that to happen, he can't go in there and just look at it, you know, the sheetrock is all, it needs to be interior...
Yeah, I'm an architect, I mean, that's...
Well, it needs to be gutted out so you can see what is...
Entire thing, you can't just look at it, there are holes, there's... Entire thing, you can't just look at it, there are holes and these-
I mean, is, is the roof in the main structure sound?
Roof in the main structure is sound, the roof in the garage, plywood is, this holds it, that's why this gigantic holds it, it's been that way for twenty years. That's why I put the tarp up, to prevent more, you know, damage between the range and all that things. But I have, like I said, I have plans to do the, the, the structure of the garage. See, I don't wanna take the garage down, because if you take the garage down, we're not gonna be able to put it back up again without going for a mess. 'Cause it's right on the, it's right on the property. It's grand spot in the end, so if I take it down, I'm not gonna be able to gut it up.
But do you think you're going to be capable of making the necessary repairs, at least to the garage, by April first, in all honesty?
I'll be honest with you, financially, no, but I, but what we can do, I mean, um, to be honest with you, I don't know. I mean, if, if, if I go back to work and I, and I raise money of capital to do it, then, I mean, the first thing for me to do would be the garage and demo. The first thing I really wanna do is demo the main building, so I can see what, gut it out, gut it out, figure electric, everything, and expose everything, find out exactly what we need to do to go. If, if in-
Can that be, can that be done by April?
I, I'll be honest with you, financially, I don't know. We can board it up, I mean, if I have to get somebody, I'll board it up, we want those definitely in two weeks, make it safe, but nobody's gonna wait. We'll do that. And then when, you know, when the weather breaks, I will most likely pull permits to redo the, the garage, 'cause the garage is simple to do. And once I get the permits to do the garage, then I can work on the garage, can strip, you know, strip it down, do what we have to do, you know, new roof joists, new roof brackets, things of that nature. So, if I get the permits to do it by April first, I'll start. And then I should have, at that point, start demoing it. I mean, to be honest with you, I need to do this as fast as I can, not for you guys, my phone call. And that's the bottom line, is it's, I wanna get her into the house before she docks, and that's, you know, that's what it was counted. So, I mean, you and I have to work out the timeline.
What I, what I would suggest to mayor and council is if in two weeks he boards up all the openings on both structures, gets that accomplished, that if, if construction hasn't started by May first, then we're gonna, then we're gonna post it as an unsafe structure and have an architect come in to vote.
Right. I'd, I'd add, I'd add in that, best you can, in that two-week period, and I think Dan will be a little liberal, is, you know, it's part of our code that any yard area front side adjacent to an unoccupied structure must be clear and maintain free of debris. So, utilize construction material, mainly store, that's one thing, but a twisted wheelbarrow on the side, toilet, that stuff's gotta go in that two-week period.
I won't be able to do that, because everything, that stuff's been there for twenty-five years and it's frozen in the ground. Well, I can tell you, there's a toilet in the back, there's stuff, there's stuff underneath the toilet.
It's been there for two years, and you boarded the house, I mean, why would you move the toilet the first, the day after closing? I know I would, but I didn't just-
Close the house was gonna get-
I know, it's the toilet on front lawn, I would drive the green-
Well, it's in the back, not front lawn, can't see it from the front lawn, but, there's, I don't, in two weeks, I won't be able to, I won't be able to do that.
Okay, because of the, the conditions of the weather, John.
Yeah, it's frozen, everything, like I said, it is probably-
The light wasn't frozen last week, just that it's really cold right now, last week was Friday.
Last week I can't time, I couldn't, I can't time a shift.
It's gonna be four eleven, four eleven. Are you excuse me, can you get someone to help you? I'll even come help you. Unoccupied building should not have the use for storage, that goes back to the garage. I know you say you store the stuff in the garage because you wanna use it in the house.
Right.
There's more stuff in that garage than fill the house four times, so no, there's no way you have any other garage to store that house.
Well, my motorcycle.
What is your position on that, Dan? Just, you know, unoccupied building should not have the use for storage of any material.
You know, I, I don't know, I'm uncomfortable taking the position of let's make a deal here, but it's, you know, there's violations there. If he's working towards a goal of, of, of correcting the violations, I can work with him, but to tell him, you don't need to do this, you don't need to do this, because ultimately, you know, I don't know if, you know, what Dean's prognosis is for, you know, for the coming year as far as able to work, and may, may, you know, may, may come, and work hasn't started at that point, we can, we can, you know, we can deal with it at, you know, as there, but he's gonna have, you know, if he doesn't make, if he doesn't close the openings and, you know, at least straighten out that, try to straighten out that roof, or at least put the tarp up, you know, or re-tarp it or do something, so it looks like, it's neglected right now. So, if the, if the property remains neglected, you know, for the next thirty days, then we'll, we'll just fight the fight, and the most of it is an unsafe structure.
All right, so that's what we'll do, we'll, we'll, and that's it, the government body, we'll authorize in two weeks, all the openings reported, and by May first, here, we phrase when you sit in, that plans will be-
We'll, we'll start construction.
Start construction.
Or start, start working on the property, start construction, move, move forward, I mean, that's-
That's a whole program, so if we go, we'll pull permits by then and all, okay? Um, but Dean, in the interim, if it's like fifty degrees in this week, then call me. I'm with Al, you know, just give me that, it's not a degree.
I understand that.
Because that's, you know, part of the issue, I think, for, for somebody who live nearby, which is a real issue.
I, I agree with you, I understand.
So, let's exit, I want to-
I just, like I said, I haven't been able to, and, you know, so I just haven't been able to, so I've been able to do it.
I know, it's just been that way for a long time, so, council-
It's been that way for twenty-five years, so-
I know. The toilet's been there for-
It's probably been there for twenty-five years.
We need a motion that it would be a two-week period to board, and by May one permitting construction houses to begin debris cleaned up in the interim, as discussed in the House every two weeks.
Again, you're comfortable with that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second?
Second, Mayor, in the event, then you have to come, that the applicant hasn't come back here for any reason. I think it would be specified that he provides proof of notice to all adjacent properties, he's not back, so that you don't have any other, so that you hear from the residents of the properties.
All right, so that would be major motion, councilman, do you want to?
Um, can I question that? This, hold on, can I question that?
Yeah, we're actually-
Yeah. The reason is that, if I have to notify my neighbors that I'm coming back-
Just the adjacent property.
He won't, but Fred, he won't come back. Okay.
Because it'll go to work. This is a long shot.
Yeah, you don't get an extension, but the way I read the ordinance, you're giving them the extension, that's it.
In two weeks, the windows aren't boarded, we're, we're out of the process, Dan does it, so he's important.
I, I wouldn't come back and ask for an extension, 'cause now-
Now, come May, there's not the next step, then there's still work in this-
It's May, I think that yard should be cleaned up a bit more.
Well, the, the, the May was the permit, starting construction. The, the resident, the, the motion said, you're gonna board up in two weeks, if weather, again, warms, you will, you will remove the toilet, remove some of this debris, the visi- visible debris. Um, I don't know what they do, we have neighbors who can help, just gotta get it done.
I, I'm sure verification of the condition of the area worsens, you know, in any way, Mr. Hagberg has the right to go out and do whatever he needs, but this doesn't-
Yeah, I mean, if someone perceiving circumstance cuts where that building suffers substantial damage, then I, I don't, mayor and council, you know, I don't need their approval, I'll do whatever I have to do on the uniform construction code, assuming that we're gonna work with Dean's cooperation to get it resolved at this point.
Just to confirm, the motion on the table is the two-week period, that debris removal is whatever, you know, permits over the next couple of weeks, and then May one, permit and construction start time. That was the motion on the table, it's been seconded and in further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Giasd, yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Mott.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Short.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Item D, adoption resolution two thousand thirteen, one point three, three, payment of the bills. So, that motion, please. Roll call. Second, and discussion?
Yes, I, I know that, I've stayed from, from this, not that I blame anybody, I just didn't look at the bills until today, and I hope that by the time I got questions asked, it was too late to get the answers, so I'm just gonna stay until I can get the answer to it.
Uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Conklin.
Yes.
Mott.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Sandra Mar.
Yes.
Giasd.
Yes. Item C, adoption resolution two thousand thirteen, one point three four, appointment of Tim Roberts as interim CFO until December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, set annual rate of twenty-five thousand dollars. Do I have, uh, that motion, please? Roll call. Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Tomato.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Giasd.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Item D, introduction by title of ordinance, six dash two thousand thirteen, authorizing position of qualified purchasing agent. Now, we're not authorizing Tim Roberts yet to be our QPA, because we need an ordinance on the books first establishing the position. So, we're introducing by title, establishing that position of qualified purchasing agent, which allows the borough to exceed the seventeen-five bid threshold without public bidding, because you have a qualified public agent, purchasing agent, excuse me, and will be ten at the same cost included in the twenty-five thousand dollars when we get to this, there's no additional costs for this. So, do I have a motion to introduce by title?
Roll call.
Second.
Any further discussion? All there? All right.
That's, that's one.
Yeah, we, is that progress?
Yeah.
That's the end.
And ordinance establishing the position of qualified purchasing agent.
Perfect, thank you. Item E, authorizing two thousand dollars to New Jersey Health, State Health Plan to obtain the borough's loss runs. This is for, in order to be to consider shopping our health insurance outside the state health plan into private market, we need our loss runs, our loss history, our claim history, to have private markets look at. And there's a cost to the cost, again, the loss runs from state, obviously, and per contract, if we go outside state health plan, the coverage has to be the same or better than the state health plan. So, this time, we're just testing the market. From people I spoke to, including our own risk manager, Vaza, you know, he has seen moving out with good loss runs, some substantial savings to municipal, so I have meeting tomorrow on a number of items, but we need the loss runs to then shop that, there's potential great savings. So, need a motion to authorize, um, two thousand dollars to the New Jersey State Health Plan to get our loss runs. So, I have a motion.
Roll call. Do I have a second? Second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Giasd.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Mott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, authorizing a stipend for twenty-nine hundred from Michael Tabak of the construction office. Mr. Tabak is one of our inspectors, and we can increase inspections, you don't have a long day, we're authorizing annual stipend twenty-nine hundred, again, to be covered out of, of, of fund this, this annual stipend, so do I have that motion, please? So, I mean, do I have a second?
Second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Short.
Yes.
Sandra Mar.
Yes.
Giasd.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Mott.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Thank you. Item G, introduction of ordinance seven two thousand thirteen, amending in its entirety bond ordinance seventeen two thousand nine. And do I have a motion, please?
Roll call. Second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. And roll call, please.
Councilman Sandra Mar.
Yes.
Giasd.
Pass. Actually, you have some, you have some-
Conklin.
Yes, was the, that was, that was- No, 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 this is an old two thousand nine ordinance, and we're amending, it was an ordinance, as you can see in the book, funding various capital, we're amending it to fund some municipal building capital projects such as restoration of restrooms, things we're gonna be looking at, it's existing, it's existing funded money, we need to modify, should change the order, the ordinance to, to utilize capital of the borough.
I got you, I did, yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Conklin.
Mott.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Short. Yes. Bond ordinance in the borough, moving down the county to state of Jersey, amending in its entirety, bond ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand nine, finally adopted October twenty-seventh, two thousand nine.
Thank you. Uh, I need a motion to table item H, what we'll be doing here, a little more time for Fred, our attorney, to finalize and have everyone review the ordinance a little more time. We're looking to introduce an ordinance that would require utilities to repave rural roads curb to curb after they make an infrastructure improvement. For example, when the utility comes in and digs that lovely trench down our roads, and it gets away repairing that trench, which then settles and it's just, you know, it's just, it's just a mess. We will look to introduce that and then pull, notify the rest of the utility workers, they will have to bring that road home again, curb to curb, rather than what you see throughout town and all town, this is what we say we want to do. So, we're tabling that, just trying to see if I can find tunes of language in that ordinance for, for we introduce by titles, and all have time to see it, okay? Item I, resolution two thousand thirteen, one point thirty-five, approving a two-year contract with Action Data Services. This is our payroll company, will be used for many, many years, and the pricing menu is included, you know, in your books, and actually, our payroll primarily is, we use Action Data, the Lakeland Bank covers most of our cost part of our payroll, that we need to secure a two-year contract that has expired with Action Data. So, do I have that motion, please?
Roll call.
Second. What's the cost of the contract?
Again, the base, you'll see, if you look, look in your book, there's a menu, pricing, so there is a charge to issue, a hundred seventy-eight thousand issue, our W-two's, items like that. The actual base charge, though, is covered by Lakeland Bank for the actual service of the business, but otherwise, there's incidental charges, quarterly filings, quarterly, you know, state filings, fifty-six dollar state wage report, so, it's a menu of items.
Did that change much from previous?
No, actually, uh, it's, it's an extension of our January one two thousand thirteen contract extending to two thousand fourteen. We maintain our current pricing structure of all services for the first year, and there will be a five percent increase effective January one two thousand fourteen. So, we locked in the last three years in pricing, and we'll see a five percent increase on this menu. Okay?
Five thousand one.
Not a way you haven't had an increase in the break.
Now, any idea what this is costing us today? All services, seventy years?
Our total is less than five thousand dollars, because the bulk of it is reimbursed by Lakeland, part of our contract, but we will link it, we cover our payroll.
That's a five percent on that, two fifty.
Any other? Motion, uh-
...through forty-one, one point forty-one. And just to clarify, so everyone is aware, what we do here is, we have our tax deal. You can see by the number of tax lien, that of two thousand ten, nine, once from our recent tax deal, two thousand twelve. A third party buys the tax liens, and once the homeowner or business owner or property redeems their third-party lien, they come and pay the borough, the borough now has to release that tax lien back to that third party. So, we're hold, we're just sending back the third-party, their number on the tax deal. So, do I have that motion?
So moved.
Is there any further discussion? And then roll call.
Councilmember Shorten, yes. Sondemeyer.
Yes.
Yosty.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Tomato.
Yes.
Thank you. I had a pen, special regards to purchasing, I didn't say new vehicles, vehicles, Fire Department, Building Department, and DVW. I had sent the governing body quite a detailed email last week, and then amended to it earlier this week, or over the weekend. Tonight, all I look into authorizes, we have an opportunity to purchase two two thousand nine Crown Victorias from Borough Butler that have sixty thousand miles on them. Book value thirty-three, thirty-eight hundred, for a cost of eighteen hundred apiece. These vehicles will be used in the construction department. We had two which we've auctioned already, one more to go to auction from the construction department. Now, there's a need of fire to have a police vehicle, something we need to visit, you know, the SUV lines, right, another day. So, these two Crown Dix will be purchased by the borough and used in the construction. And again, we're spending thirty-six hundred, we've just done a transfer of four, but we also collected ten thousand plus dollars from the recent auction. So, we're more than funding these vehicles. I did have on here DVW, but that's on hold. We have a Mason dump that has fail, it's on its last leg. What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Yeah, it's out of commission, so we need to talk with them. We're gonna look at that, because state contract now is Fords, mechanics prefer Dodges, so we're gonna price state contract versus bid on Dodge, and just see a comparison before we move forward. I told our mechanics that, you know, I could justify a few bucks for their preference, but substantial, they may be working on a Ford, so we'll have to see.
They did point out some good facts.
Oh, absolutely.
The better the truck, the looser versus steel.
Yeah, all those, which is what we'll bring to the council before we make a decision, but it also goes down to the remaining dollar and the actual cost difference. So, the only thing that's on this, we're moving tonight, is the purchase of two vehicles. Obviously, funds are certified from Butler, total of thirty-six hundred dollars. Our mechanic did look at these vehicles last week, and gave them high marks, and we will revisit the fire department's vehicle lien and the DVW very shortly. So, do I have that motion for the local residents to use?
So moved.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, it's funny, your point of saying, you know, Butler is getting rid of these cars with sixty thousand miles on them, right? Obviously, they have a plan in refreshing their vehicle.
What do you say?
Before they get to, you know, too old, and we can get something for it. We need to come up with a plan. We can't even have a plan of buying a nine-hundred-dollar car last year and having a twenty-six-hundred-dollar budget line for fixing that nine-hundred-dollar car. It makes no sense to do things this way, right? Every year, spending this kind of money to then fix it up, spend a lot of money, and it's gone by the end of the year. So, we need a better plan, and that plan may mean that we have to spend some money and buy some new cars. But don't be afraid of that, okay? If it makes sense, if it makes economic sense, we have to do it. So, we're gonna be looking at that, and hopefully, we can bring that plan forward.
And just for the record, Councilman Tomato and I met yesterday with our DVW, the overall department meeting, and our mechanic had brought up that discussion, and we requested of our mechanic by March first to give us a five-year plan on exactly your point, show analysis of the money's going in annually on certain cars, because once we're putting more than its value, it's time to look at it. And that's why we'll revisit, we'll buy a police car, and our DVW will be issued soon as well. Because you're right, we wait till it's broken and then try to figure it out. Same as the computers, where we sat in that with RIT, where we need to start a police program where we're constantly updating our computers instead of waiting for Ford to break and then have the truck. So, these things are all being done, so thank you. And by March first, we'll have that plan.
I agree with what you're saying, but to go out and buy, my family is great for buying used, and people who think their car is dead at a hundred thousand, we don't feel that way. To go out and spend eighteen hundred dollars on a vehicle that the mechanic say is in good shape and spend only eighteen hundred dollars, that sounds like a great deal to me.
It does, absolutely, and that's why we're gonna move on. My point being that, you know, last year, we bought a nine-hundred-dollar car, and that's not bad. And we spent twenty-six hundred dollars for that.
What kind of maintenance are they gonna recommend? Do we need two tires around that, or that they anticipate this next year or two with these two vehicles?
They need to clean it up. Talked yesterday about the one, the one vehicle's ready to run.
Are they all reassembled?
The other one needs a hundred-dollar part.
They come stripped? Everything stripped down, ready? We just take key?
All the piece stuff is out of it. They have the weak decal and they're ready to run.
What's the cost of that, that's included in the eighteen hundred?
No, no, no.
Just the purchase price.
Decals.
The decals, if I may, the decals can be taken off with a tool that I've already talked to, the sergeant from Butler who does decal-ing and extreme graphics. And one of the things I liked about Butler, there's not a lot of decals on the car, so we can take it off and basically it's clean, and if you can't drive around, probably could drive around with Butler. I mean, it's, you know, the intent is just strip it off and, you know, use the car, you know, the lights that are on it and stuff are all been deactivated, but they're still there. So, you know, we try to, the only thing I take out is the cages that are in the back. Contractors don't like that.
Okay, but to your point, this is a good deal, but when you're looking at a, depends on the scale, so the DVW you use is entirely different. So, to buy a used, you know, a used Mason dump, it may not be, you're not gonna find the same kind of deal.
The examples with that Mason dump that's out of service now, the driver's seat fell to the floor.
Oh, right. But it's a race point, we need to have a plan, so we will have. Okay, so, any further discussion?
Mileage and stuff, what does Dan put on them?
Sixty thousand.
Yeah, what does he typically do it a year? What's typically doing a year?
What does he do it a year?
Mileage wise, property.
One of the property may be, one could just blow it as expected.
Well, all the cars except the car that I use, they only get, well, doing the three towns, we do about a hundred miles a day, whoever's got, whoever the inspector is. So, you know, that's five days a week, it's five hundred, two thousand a month, twenty-four thousand a year.
Two, six, seven years or so, before we're done with that. It's fifty years, it's not full-time.
Yeah. Mileage wise, eighty, sixty, or whatever.
Yeah, the police cars are great, because, you know, we don't idle them, we don't do anything, so the car's actually in a retirement mode compared to what it was used as, you know, so it's, you know, we've had very good luck with the police cars with sixty, seventy thousand miles on them.
Good. All right, we were still in discussion, and then roll call.
Councilmember Sondemeyer.
Yes.
Yosty.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Tomato.
Yes.
Delerico.
Yes.
Shorten.
Okay. Item O, introduction ordinance nine, two thousand thirteen. This is an introduction entitled with a revision to the soil mow ordinance, reason being, we receive, you know, like I said earlier, our order form, and we're gonna do all the one change that had to be made, is we originally had that the delivery would be curb drop, and the concern is clearly that mowers lie in our roadway curbs for extended periods of time, which one we don't want from the DOD standpoint, two, from the DOD standpoint, so more amendment, a lot, we can't have that sooner. So, it didn't amend that it'll be a driveway drop, all harmless, all agreements are protected, though it's off the roads and on the person's property. It's quite clear on, there's no special orders, no special here, that's the mechanics, driveway drop, it can just go, drop and go. So, that's the amendment we're introducing, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? And then you roll call.
Councilmember Yosty.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Tomato.
Yes.
Delerico.
Yes.
Shorten. Yes. Sondemeyer.
Yes.
That's ordinance of Borough, Home and Delight, I'm safe, standing Jersey, and I need chapter four, general licensing section four dash four, soil slash most delivery permits will revise general ordinance of Borough, Home and Delight, two thousand, to revise section four dash four point three, delivery location, that's February, and also it's.
Item nine.
Nine.
Nine, yeah. All right. Item P, adoption of resolution two thousand thirteen, one point forty-two. We are approving a proposal from James V. Cutella, which came from our engineer. For the new restaurant facility in Walter T. Bergen, we a moment ago authorized the funding of a ninety-nine-thousand-dollar grant. We are tonight authorized it six thousand dollars to the architect for design oversight, so that's the whole, the entire services from him on this project. So, do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
John, this six thousand comes out of the ninety-nine.
Yes, it does.
Is we're taking it out of the Rose Fund?
No.
Out of the ninety-nine.
Why is the six thousand dollars?
Because the ordinance, we just introduced the funding, okay? That was grant reimbursed.
Yeah, well, that's what I wanted to hear, but we're paying this out of the Rose Fund, and then will be reimbursed.
Correct, because the funding mechanism is not placed here. I had that we adopted our next meeting, and that can be transferred back. I don't want delay on this authorization, we want to get this out to bid, it'll spring it up. Okay, item Q, I'm sorry, moving along here, made the chat, sorry. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Tomato.
Yes.
Delerico.
Yes.
Shorten. Yes.
Item Q, authorization, information session on the Riverwalk, which will be Thursday, February seventh, two thousand thirteen, at seven p.m. I need a motion authorize that meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? And then it will be a formally advertised meeting, forum, but actually, we'll be here. Sorry.
Basically, a committee.
We did that earlier, we have a forum. When I did my non-agenda, so we discussed, we got a nod, we're gonna have a forum. Any further discussion?
May, we can still sit out there, right?
Right, we're not gonna be in the day.
We don't have to be here to discuss it enough.
It's a presentation from Burgess Associates on what they've felt so far on this plan. To anyone who wants to be there, primarily, who have noticed that property. Any further discussion? And just all in favor?
Aye.
And authorization for a public meeting, February twenty-sixth, at seven p.m., in regards to the Rafkin Road, curve sidewalk paving utility project. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion?
May, I sent you a few questions to the mayor.
Can I respond?
It was regarding, you know, a section of the road, are we ignoring the entire road?
No, just the fact that members of this project face.
Right, and those members of those residents coming and say, you don't want that, right? But the next section, those are just, we will fix that.
We can't, we can't, we have to oppose phase two, because we don't know a DOT grant in phase two, we don't know costs up there too.
I don't understand, how is that gonna work, right? Because you're gonna open it up to the public, and I would assume they're gonna go through a lot of the public.
Well, it's ultimately up to the county.
Understood, but the public, no, 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 no sidewalks, right? They don't have the money to pay for it, they're not gonna do sidewalks, but ultimately, they're responsible for sidewalks.
This is why we're having this.
Right, and then, oh, by the way, if you don't fix up your sidewalks, now you're gonna get fined.
No, that's not, no, they're ultimately responsible.
They're responsible.
The condition is that deplorable, I mean, their insurance company, they're probably thinking that someone could address that tomorrow.
Well, because we would vote no, we're not gonna be responsible for the sidewalks, because the town, us, we would vote based on what they decided, that no new sidewalks are needed, but then it gets false, with the trips.
Depends on a lot of that, depends on how many, there's possibly sixty-five homes, residents, depends on how many residents you get representing the neighbors, right? If we have twenty of sixty-five here saying, no, I don't feel that's a representation of the entire project, so we have to revisit that and discuss what we wanna do. Here's what Councilman Yosty's to refer to, we have three hundred thousand dollars from the DOT, that would be enough to do maybe just paving, okay? The borough would have to make an investment for curbs and driveway drops, okay? Sidewalks are always assessment projects in the borough, the borough, unless it's fully funded by a grant, and its history has never funded sidewalks, any street is fully funded by a grant. So, when it's not fully funded, history has shown, we would go to the residents and say, here's the options, if we just pave it, we just do curbs, to do sidewalks, it would be assessment, and how do you, how do the residents feel about it? Just briefly talking with the engineer, but we'll be here that evening doing the presentation. The average, it would be about five hundred dollars per year, ten-year assessment per household to do the sidewalks, depends on linear footage of frontage, some people would need three hundred, something, it would be five fifty, depending on their linear frontage. So, we'll have to, we'll get a feel from the residents.
Does it repair the sidewalks that are there?
Replace, replace, brand new, but the borough doesn't pay for sidewalks, no.
Right, I'm just wondering, we've had somebody, look at it, do they?
They're all, they're all.
And these are sidewalks leading to school.
The sidewalks all the way up?
Goes all the way up to the walls.
All the way around?
Way up to.
I didn't think there were at the top section.
But the borough doesn't own it, or not, the borough, borough has no control over the house, but those are fairly Alexandra, but that's not part of this project. Go look, you know, pull the snows, go look, they're not in our shape, but we'll put it out to the residents and to raise points. If fifty of the sixty-five say we don't want it, then the borough has, the governing body has to decide how we proceed, if we don't do it, then the race point is, then there's phase two, which is from.
Liability for us to say no, this is sidewalks leading to a school, is there any liability for us to say no, because that's a part of the book?
Yeah, not a liability issue, because we don't, we don't have a liability on sidewalks.
Sometimes we have to inspect it, and we have to find them if they don't fix it, essentially.
If they're not maintained, that should be happening, you know, ten, ten.
It needs to be a board of presentation.
It'll be part of the discussion.
Right?
Because Council's concern is this, phase two, which we have an application pending right now in front of the DOT we filed last year, is, phase one is Glen Road to the end, to Coliseum, past one. Phase two would be from Hampton, from Union to Glen, about the same linear footage, so you can only estimate the same costs. But we don't know what our grant is from the DOT yet, so assuming it's all the same, okay, let's say we get the same three hundred thousand, we would then go to those residents and say, what do you want to do?
We set a precedent, right, we have to do.
And the race point is if one votes yes for sidewalks and the other doesn't, then you have a road done, and vice versa, so those are the things we can talk about.
And this would happen throughout the town, for eleven days a day.
If you choose to voting as your, as your rule, I mean, that's history over the last two voted-out assessment projects before any of our time, was pure vote, it was nine to eight, didn't go, that was the governing body's choice back then. Right, that, it was, it was.
To me, sidewalks leading up to a school, sidewalks throughout the town, really, should not be left for discussion, any type of infrastructure, should not be left for discussion.
Then that could be your vote.
That's, that's my opinion.
And I don't have your vote either. No, again, this is, but we wanna educate the, well, educate the public on what we're doing at recent. You know, because even if, let's say it's, let's say it's five thousand dollars over ten years for a resident, they can say, I can't get my old Mason dump, three thousand dollars, okay? You can't piecemeal it and then do, but it's over a ten-year cycle, borough needing to bank interest, it's at one percent interest, I mean, it's not a bad deal, I just wanna educate the public, this is why we're doing this for that week, because we need to educate the voters, it's no surprise.
I mean, to John's point, if they're liable, they should have fixed it already.
Of course.
And we shouldn't have toilets on our button, won't we?
You know, I think the strangest thing about sidewalks is, I was, the borough, they put sidewalks on Glen Wall Ave, and they are really used by people, but not on Rafkin Road. People walk, I'm telling you, I'm there a lot, in the street, and children do not walk to school, they just don't. Everybody's afraid to let their kids walk, we don't have kids walking up and down the street, it's a rare sight, but the people who walk, walk in the street on Rafkin Road, it's very strange.
Actually, the chief of Martin, anyone who wants to join the tenement, with the Safe Streets to School organization.
I thought that was already said.
Who, you know, hasn't funded anything the last fifteen years, but they wanna come here and tell me they can get us money, but, Mark, I'm approved, so if it gets money, this whole, you know, cancel the meeting. Okay, it happened, we just gotta educate the public, who knows how we're gonna vote? We can't wait for phase two, now we're talking two thousand fourteen, and we're just gonna delay phase one, the DOT's not gonna do it. Okay, just, just a little education, okay? I'm sorry, guys, do we have a motion on that? We did, okay, all in favor? We're authorizing that meeting, thank you. Need a motion, oh, no, we have more, non-agenda items, need a motion to waive building and zoning fee permits for accessible ramp of Fifty-Eighth South Road for purpose of a handicapped child accessing the street. Do I have that motion? Wait for it.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion?
Can we do this? Is something new?
No, not on agenda, just wave.
Wave please. Something to happen, we waved it in our conference, we waved it, we waved out. I think this works. Okay, do we, do I roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we are going to authorize an interlocal agreement between the Borough of Bloomington and the Livingston District Board of Education. Central Local Service Agreement should be effective for planned review of an unpleasant elementary school. Little school, we've done it, middle schools, we, Dan, Haggard, enters into interlocals, revenue for the borough to do the second review, so this is for, so those are motions, are second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Tomato.
Yes.
Delerico.
Yes.
Shorten.
Yes.
Sondemeyer.
Yes.
Yosty.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Tomato.
Yes.
What I'd like to do is just authorize, we, I opened a public hearing earlier for the Laeger Field bleacher application, but we're noticing for the fifth, the residence within two hundred feet, so I need an authorization for an additional public hearing, February fifth, with the Laeger application. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a resolution, motion to approve resolution two thousand thirteen, one point This would be the appointment, personnel appointment of Sandy Capriada as part-time secretary to the police department, and I would, I would state that that motion referenced a start date of February first, an annual salary of fifteen thousand, all based on approval based on resolution of a matter we discussed in executive session, a personal matter we discussed, executive share related, that's, that has to be resolved, it's a result of this appointment. So, do I have that motion? Second.
Second.
And any further discussion?
He said that's forty.
Forty-three.
Really?
Three.
I thought forty-three was P.
I have forty-two on P.
Okay.
Forty-one was N.
Okay.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I need authorization, resolution two thousand thirteen, one point four four. This is authorizing service charges on return negotiable instruments, in other words, bounce a check, we charge twenty bucks, we need a resolution, do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And final, non-agenda item, I mentioned earlier, is the introduction of, by title, of a new revised chapter twenty-one of our municipal towing. This ordinance has been developed by our chief, has been worked on for quite a while, it's just bringing a lot more accountability to the, our towing operator, our procedure, how we go about it, and we're just introducing my title, so you all have plenty of time to review, which I, you know, we're early on the comment, but the chief has done a great job of writing this to fit the needs of our department, that's what we're supposed to have. Well, so we need to, motion to introduce my title is chapter twenty-one municipal towing. So moved. Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Delerico.
Yes.
Shorten.
Yes.
Sondemeyer.
Yes.
Yosty.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Tomato.
Yes.
February nineteenth, seven p.m. Lots of great, make a little work.
Yeah, there's a lot out there, I'm sure the chief has good information.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Okay. Norsemend chapter twenty-one municipal towing. All right, I'm motioning to make public comment. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come up, say your name, address for the record.
I'm not gonna come up, but I'm, Mr. Mayor, on the Riverwalk.
Name and address for the record.
On the Riverwalk situation.
Those things, one oh two Cook Court?
One oh two Cook Court.
Thank you.
On the Riverwalk situation, could we invite a planning board for that meeting also? And we would have to advertise in order to do that.
That's a great idea.
And I was wondering if Jim could advertise for both, and I'll see the chairman and make sure it's okay.
No, great, and Barbara's coming in. As you know.
Okay, well, I will clear that with the chairman tomorrow, I'll sort it out, okay?
Yeah.
Just the suggestion.
Yeah, and I guess it's safer to advertise in case you have a call.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the problem.
Sorry, I didn't think about that.
They couldn't just come as residents?
They can, and the forms are safer than.
Yeah, because we're really talking about borough business, you know, it's not like we're attending, you know, like a discussion of the freehold, or is it, it's really borough business, and it's better than.
Yeah, you might not have a forum, but it's safer if you advertise.
Got it, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come up. Okay, see, no, a motion to close?
So moved.
And, you know, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we now have a late executive session, I'm seeing James Liston having a look at it. Action may be taken after executive session, and our next meeting, next meeting is two five, February, no, Monday.
Monday morning.
January. Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
And eight, thirty, yeah, followed by February fifth, work session, so we'll enter executive session. Sorry. The pleasure ever arrives. I love the pleasure.
At eleven twenty-eight, okay, we'll make a motion if we can ask a question.
The only action we're doing is, I'd like a motion to enter into the interlocal agreement with Kenlon on mechanic services.